All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the names of order tonight, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the defense of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming to our meeting tonight. Before we do roll call at this time, I would just like us all to take some time for one moment of silence and remember some of the local hymn, please. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Johnson. Yes?
Oh my, yep.
Is that true?
Yes. With that, we're going to take a motion to approve the agenda presented tonight.
Madam Chair, we have amended agenda. Item number six, under consent agenda, three adult meal prices of $3.20 for lunch, $2.40 for breakfast as required within SFSP program. It's effective October 1st through the 23rd of December. Ultimately, what that is, is that's a requirement for us to operate our summer lunch program during the school year. So, right now, effective September 1st through December 23rd, all children in the Brannan Valley School District are receiving a free lunch and breakfast. And this is a requirement in accordance to that program. That program will be continued until the 23rd of December or until the United States Department of Agriculture funding runs out. So, there is a slight change to the adult meal price for lunch. I believe it's increased from $3.85 for us to operate that program.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to adjourn to approve the agenda as we may leave, please.
Senator.
If there's a second, or those in favor, opposed, motion passes, thank you. No conference interest or disclosure or waiver requests tonight. So that takes us to our committee input portion, and I would welcome Mr. Justin Luthen.
Yes, as everybody, I'm a high school teacher, and I'm also type 1 diabetic for the past 16 years. So I was wanting to address you tonight and let everyone in the community know why it's an awkward year for those of us with home disabilities, because normally if I was sick, I would sit and call in, and they'd wish me well and hope I was back in a day or two. But this year, there's an additional stress because I'm not sure everyone understands that one of the biggest threats to keeping our schools open is having our teachers. So there's discussion making us essential workers that we quarantine. And in a normal year, we will have a couple of days where so many of our kids are kind of sick that we have to call in, have them on the quarantine period. And we have a substitute shortage this year. And so while I'm worried about COVID, it makes sense. I have an additional stress because I really do worry that when I call in sick, if I get it, that I'm going to be responsible for closing down a school. And quite honestly, if I'm sick, there's nothing we can do about that. But I do support keeping the current quarantine rules when students have any contact. And on the additional one, I would have to, I would strongly support actually an AB schedule for the remainder of the semester. When you have something like type 1 diabetes, I have increased risk still. I've seen my doctor, and he told me I was okay to go back to work. But I'm not the only one. We have other teachers who have spouses with type 1 diabetes, or teachers who have recently unfelled of cancer. We have at least one high school staff member who has a spouse with cancer. And if we start getting community spread in our school, I'm really worried that we won't have enough teachers, which won't be very many, who have to sit down without a concern that it might lead to shutting down your school for two or three weeks or longer. And in addition, if I do get something like COVID, type 1 diabetes have a much tougher time with illness. I've had diabetes for 16 years, and I've had the influence of A1 time. It did require hospital care. Diabetics tend to run a condition known as diabetic ketoacidosis, which actually had a high school staff member die last year. It's really very, very mysterious. And so if I get it, I am an increased risk of something like that, but I'm very good at understanding the toll that I'm okay there. But I'm very high risk for being what they call a long follower. I might be out for weeks or months, as some of our rental staff members will, but could be a different thing if they were exposed to it. So I just want to stress, I think the only way to keep our schools open is to keep COVID out of our schools. And I'm worried that some of the loosening of quarantine rules would, how so many of these kids are asymptomatic, it just increases the risk of creating COVID into our schools. And I think everyone here tonight is here because we want the schools open. We have so much support for our schools. But I really do think the modifications we have right now are inconvenient for students and staff. But it does keep our schools going. And I am very concerned that if we loosen that, we have enough staff members that it really would increase the risk of closing down our students. So that's the only thing I'd share. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. It's great.
Justin, can we say, you want to clarify, because you had a good talk earlier about AB. So, you want to elaborate on this theme, please?
So it's two parts. I know some of the school districts have made the quarantine area exposed to some of the 60 to 15-minute volunteer. And if we made that volunteer, we would just have more students in the building than might have COVID. And then the other concern I have with why I always prefer the AB schedule is there's really not, I'm not sure there's another profession that has so much direct contact. I would say I'm within 60 to 15 minutes, probably 50 or 60 kids a day. So we just, not that many students went online. We have very full classes. And so if those students get it, the risk of a teacher contracting it, I think is quite high. And so I give the AB schedule as a way to keep our activities going. It wouldn't be ideal. We have contact one day, and then it would be much more efficient than last year, where we just kind of had to drop off a hack. It could also be preferable. And we've got many fewer kids in class tonight. Definitely at that point, have 60 between me and wherever I like to read it, or even those students, but only about half the students in the class. So I would support both of those.
So Justin, if I may say, some of the schools that are, as I said, losing, how they require, they have a mask in place, and they also require masks in order for face-to-face peace, but that's not something we do. So is your premise that we should not, that we should put any students in class if they were being masked if they weren't tagged? Or?
Yeah. If it was up to me, I would require masks if they were tagged. We've got other things on the agenda tonight. But that is very low. I would definitely say it's below 20% of the high school. I have one last day where I have one student in that. And my classroom, like, my 24 is the smallest class, 28. So I really am within 60 to 15 minutes, a number of students. And so you have the classes we don't have on the modern room. And you know, we have them on my desk, but they're only about two and a half tall. So if a kid walks up, which most of them do, they're looking correct reaction. So the classroom doesn't give me any protection. I would say, well, let's everyone sit down. So, yeah, with on the mask thing, and the plastic, if you have needles, if we have them on our tables, we think they help, but they also, they might be, they also the potential spread during the year. You?
Thank you, Mr. Luthen. Next, we've got another question.
First of all, I thank you guys for allowing me to talk to you. I guess first I want to know, is the decision already made? Because it sounds like the vote has already been decided in the emails that we've gotten. And I don't want to waste anybody's time by even trying to tell you what we feel and why we think the way we think. If you guys are making your decision.
I think that it's now, compared to where we probably have here, we have plans. We truly have just thrown out options that we can, at this time, present to the public. That doesn't mean that there are other options being considered. But I wouldn't say that it's never been the Brannan Valley School District Board, nor will it ever be as long as I am here, that we make a decision prior to coming to a vote. Thank you.
Molly, I'll piggyback on that. We don't have conversations outside of here. I don't send an email to all of them, or they, we don't do it that way. And I will tell you on my little thing that I have, I have six different ideas or things to consider. So I don't think we're there at all. And it's not ever been, at all the years I've been in the district, I've never felt like a decision was made before we walked in.
He would block my calls anyway. Well, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. The positions I hold, I have the utmost respect for. I want you guys to know that. I would not be in anybody's position, especially if I had to watch this. So I know I have the guts for children and our staff with every single decision I make. So I want to thank you for being here tonight. I don't look for you to have access to statistics. So this is 2020, and we know that what's effect tonight might not be effect tomorrow. Secondly, everyone sitting before me is way more educated than myself. I come here as a mother. I have three kids, a junior, a freshman, and a seventh grader. And they are the most important thing in my life. I also know, for people called at me, that they, they trusted me to address something. Way to think 20 people didn't stand up here and tell you the exact second thing and the reasons that nobody was able to deal with. Dr. Washington, in all the dressing concerns, I better have a background model for this. While I feel like I did a great job, like you said, giving this information, you may be quietly there at the grand house, or just because of quarantine issue, not a COVID issue. When you said that, we didn't get any numbers. So what I'm saying tonight is just, I don't want to, like, I don't know how many kids are quarantined. I don't know how many kids have COVID. I can just tell you what I received at the high school, and that is all. You gave us the option of going one-on-one, and we didn't want to do that. Do we want to stay to a traditional schedule, or do we want to update the schedule? Many of the students still wasn't surveyed, and I don't believe they represent how we actually are. I feel, I do agree that we have a quarantine issue. It's time and when quarantine completely healthy kids. Not only that, but our regulations are not sufficiently accurate. We have soccer players who have been working seven days because no one gives them seven days to do them as close contact. We have dance clubs who were notified on the 15th that they were close contact on the 10th, but now quarantined for the remainder of the 14 days. And that their close contact is based on CDC charts, so we didn't even say they were seen on the bus. So the post contact doesn't even matter, but now accurate. Just last week, I gave them a post contact credit grant in age. I got 130 samples. As a hundred thirty percent of parents regretted that. One woman told me that her daughter was just so inclined that she would post contact after 14 days suffering passed. Therefore, quarantine would not be necessary. If that's a procedure for doing their best to make close contacts, I would say, how definitely should we always be in close contact anyway? Honestly, how many kids walk around school and they're exposed for the light next both others in the seven days and some of the 14 days before being notified? Like Mr. Luthen, I mean, he could have came in contact with some of these kids that walked around and had no idea they were exposed. At the beginning of the year, a light survey was sent to each elementary unit in the district. New research results tested and overwhelmingly showed well-loved, mutual, and it's now with support for monitoring their cases in school and the covering admitted that we just have a clear design. Most of our dances are in school. We have very few actual students in front of them. That aside, I think that must work for me. While many students will be very successful, they have to handle the workload on their days off several more. As if we don't have pressure on our kids as ends, as they're now our kids, and they're now ready or mature now to look at such a reverse cycle. I need the masses to be the same. I'm not here because my kids are now coming in the way. They are running, and they're there every single day. I'm here for my friends who have kids. I have a friend who's from research studies, they're wonderful, possible. She can't take them. She's one of those working on this, and they don't care about that. We have parents that can, they're layups. They have a choice. And if you think that 13-year-old boy can stay away himself and do schoolwork, it's not happening. Some may, but many of yours are not going to. We have addictions that start at age 11 years old. Pornication is a huge addiction. My son needs to go home to be home two or three days a week without limited strength. I have no parental supervision. That worries me. Bringing them to the pride themselves would be the best. And I want to ask you, is this the best that we can do? I'm concerned about all aspects of my title is like, education to mental health. We have a lot of kids that suffer from mental health disorders. I'm blessed that my kids do not. But I have residents that come to baby, and this disruption is killing them. They mentally, it doesn't matter how healthy you are, if you don't even want to live. It's been proven that children who are under their best routine and disruption is not helping very much at all. At the beginning of the 2021 school year, the Department of Health and the Department of Education required a 14-day quarantine for students and staff who were in a middle post contact to a non-post contact public quarantine case. Post contact is defined by the CDC and the Department of Health as an individual who's within 16 to 15 minutes of circumvent. Two weeks, so all South school districts. So I know four members received it, and Donna Clutchman received it, that the Department of Education lifted that requirement and made it a recommendation. Education would now be a recommendation no longer required. Did you know that a local school are not even requiring their workers to quarantine if they're considered a close contact? After the Department of Education released the center of information, Hearsford High School, which is much smaller in size than us, but I want to do a rating, the 54th unit is, we are number one in the state, 54th in the state, we are number one in the state. They changed the recommendations. They're no longer requiring that their students quarantine for 14 days. It's a recommendation that's no longer required. I took the time last week to reach out to some of your staff members and to the superintendent. I asked them things for going, because we can all make the California news articles, but to hear them one-on-one, and they are, they're saying it's going to be, I understand it's only a week, but I'm just not sure why it's not something that can be thrown under the table. There's a lot of us that want our kids in school. They need the education. Brannan Valley is the best. We pride ourselves on that. We have the best students, we have the best administration, and I think we have the best school board. I think you guys are going to make your decision tonight, and I think you'll remember all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. It takes us to our agenda. Ms. President, first of our administration reports, Superintendent reports, Superintendent Carson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few brief items to order on here this evening. Elementary school construction downtown on 41st Street and Sparta. We remain on time and on motion. Would note that our elementary boundary line committee has convened and had our first meeting last week on Monday. We have our second meeting on October 5th, on October 5th. Really appreciate that group and their work on that, with the plan on bringing proposed and proposed boundaries to you guys to report there in early October. And then we also have a public meeting for our parents and guardians that are interested in seeing what the new proposed boundary lines for 2021, for the 21-22 school year will apply. The other item I would say is pretty exciting. That group is working on developing a high-level concept for BB Vision 2040, when all of our elementary schools are built in about 20 years. So that's exciting to have a concept of what those boundary lines will look like for our future. Elementary school staff, we will be hosting general concessions for that new elementary school in October. Would encourage any and all staff members that are interested in the transfer to the new elementary school to submit their, submit their transfer request as timely as possible. We'll manage those three months of January and then February, and we want to improve new positions for student growth as we proceed forward and be ready for the follow-ups with you. Also want to note, in that elementary boundary line committee process, we'll be meeting with Fred Ass and our elementary PTA, because that elementary specifically will see the most significant change and most significant impact, given the location of the new school and where that boundary line will need to sit as far as capacity goes of Fred Ass Elementary. Most of the kids we pull out of Fred Ass, and so it'll be visiting their PTA here in early October as well. Hope to have that all timed in early November, so we can communicate that to, communicate that to our parents and those impacted specifically that are reassigned to a different elementary. Calendar items, virtual parent teacher conferences? If that's half as bad for you guys as it is for me, we've got problems. Parent teacher conferences here. In the next couple days, they are working to open. Appreciate our parents and guardians' understanding as we, as we know through that. So I have no certainty of any questions you have.
During that, we will go on to our next topic. We have a reward policy tonight. That takes us to general business item number one, the AB hybrid evaluation report.
All right, so I've said a couple items from the very beginning. And one thing that I just want to make certainly, make certain that is clear, is that our evaluation of the AB model was not at the elementary or intermediate school level. That is one thing I just want to make certain is clear. Can you just turn this off? All right, so as we get started. All right, perfect. Close. Brannan Valley School District Pandemic Response Plan outlines truly two goals, two very straightforward goals. Reduce the spread of disease, maintain educational functions. So as we, as we as administration manage our situation, those are two things that we specifically focus on. In addition to that, I want to note that this has been an evaluation. A previous comment during the public hearing was, a decision's been made. At no point in time have we outlined that a decision was made. What we outlined is that we were evaluating your potential strategy to address the challenge. So we as a nation, I have absolutely phenomenal administrators within our administrative council that I think we're all about. And when we, when we have challenges, regardless of what aspect of our educational system they are in, we work in a proactive manner as much as possible to address those challenges and improve. So what we do when we're sitting around the table, we talk about our pandemic response plan, and what we could do to improve, improve our course having that challenge. Our pandemic response plan states we'll institute the recommendations of public health officials. So what I'm going to, what I'm going to say now, I hope very fast to, I understand people may have wanted more options in their survey. However, during a public health crisis, as the superintendent of your school district, I rely on the Center for Disease Control and the Department of Health when establishing our strategies to reduce the spread of disease and maintain educational functions. I am not going to bring forward an option that disregards the Center for Disease Control and Department of Health recommendations. What we do is we work proactively to evaluate a solution to close contact challenges while continuing to adhere to CDC and Department of Health recommendations. It was not a decision, but more so it was an opportunity to engage our stakeholders and gather feedback on a potential decision. We wanted to get insight from you as individuals, which is why we ask, was very important to us, because there may come a point in time where we don't ask feedback on a closure or a scheduling change decision because it's an emergency. We were not in an emergency. What we did is we had a challenge, a close contact challenge, 14-day close contact quarantine challenge. There are certainly length-type issues associated with testing, with the identification of close contacts, and communications from departments, understanding all of that. We wanted to engage that opportunity to act proactively, but also engage with our stakeholders and give everyone, our, of all the parents at those high schools, the opportunity to voice which one of these options that adhere to the guidelines and the recommendations, which one they, which one they prefer. We also wanted to have some foresight into what was happening in schools around the state of South Dakota. We have seen large schools close and move to business learning for multiple weeks because of springs in COVID, as well as close, the number of close contacts within their schools. So we wanted to act a bit of foresight and potentially evaluate a strategy that could give us some long-term success. With all that being said, it is absolutely 195% right on the line, but we say we want to never blow our kids and kids in school all day long. That's what we want. But right now, we're navigating this pandemic, and we're going to do the very best we can. And I will continue to bring forward solutions that adhere to guidelines and recommendations of the CDC and Department of Health. We are a public health crisis. We have to rely on those individuals to help guide us. So it was an evaluation, has been, always will be, until a decision is made at the board here. So just a real quick overview of the evaluation process and timeline. We have communicated the process and timeline from the very beginning, when we informed folks that they are going to be evaluated, a strategy to really reduce close contacts at the high school and the middle school. Engaged with our teachers association leadership, engaged with our middle school, high school staff, our administrative council, Brannan Valley High School Student Council, obviously the two surveys, and then on to our middle school, parents and staff, our high school parents and staff, and ultimately this board report here this evening. So survey results, real quick. Approximately 56.5% of Brannan Valley High School parents and guardians preferred the traditional model. Approximately 68% of high school staff preferred the AB model. Approximately 53% of our middle school parents preferred the traditional model. And approximately 62% of our middle school staff preferred the AB hybrid model. Brannan Valley High School Student Council, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to go on a little bit of brag here. We have absolutely phenomenal kids. Words cannot express how proud I am of our high school student council. proud I am of our high school student council. Uh, myself and the high school administration, back then on Monday, uh, we had a two hour long conversation regarding the situation. And ultimately what they wanted to do is they wanted to take the opportunity to go out and ask their classmates and student body what their thoughts are about the A D schedule prior to coming back on Wednesday and engaging in that conversation. They are thoughtful, insightful, and mature. And again, I can't, I can't stand up about our high school student health on those students. Um, they, they truly, truly are great kids. There was new information received on late Friday afternoon. Received a memorandum from Rodney Freeman, who serves as school attorney. Um, that information is currently being, uh, dissected. We're doing our due process in evaluating, um, that, um, legal position. Uh, so at this point in time, what we're really asking for, what I'm really asking for is for our board of education to pause, just pause, pursue forward with our current approach. Again, we will, we will continue to struggle with close contact challenges until it's addressed by the board of education or unless the Department of Health, um, guidelines and recommendations change. And that's one thing that I'm very clear in my communications is if those guidelines change, we certainly can change. Um, so if I could raise my hand in one and have that happen, I certainly would. Um, but at this point in time that I would ask is the board of education pause, allow us to further evaluate, um, the legal opinion that was sent out on late Friday afternoon. Um, and then as we, as we do our diligence, we can develop what is our options and you can at that point in time, um, weigh the advantages and disadvantages of each, um, and ultimately come up with the best bad idea you got. And that's a, that's a phrase that my administrative council has heard on a regular basis. And I will tell you that in these really, really challenging times, um, it seems to be that's all working with the best bad idea we got. So with that, so the energy, any questions you have? More comments?
I appreciate the information that you shared tonight. Um, I think there is other information that I know the public would love to know how many close contacts we've had or how many cases we've had. Uh, simply that's not public information either. We just can't share that information. Um, I know the DOH Department of Health is now offers recommendations for close contacts rather than having a definitive answer. Um, there has been a few districts, we know the area, I know Miss Joseph referenced Harrisburg, but I will say there is something to be noted that that hasn't been a widely adopted change across the state. In fact, we're seeing across the state several full school closures for the spread of COVID. And so we are very fortunate not to be in that situation. We have to close our doors and every student goes home without option. In fact, some of those schools that have closed their doors are also mask required schools. So I just want to go back to saying that the plan that we had at the get-go where masks were strongly recommended and partitions has been working because we do not have a COVID issue, but we do acknowledge the close contact issue. What I would love to say in a perfect world, perfect world is if somehow we could go back to what was prior to the latest change in the Department of Health, and that is that masks and partitions were taken into consideration when given close contacts. I think that would be, we'd be paving a way more than any of us could get on board with. I don't have control of Department of Health. All I can hope is that they are listening to their constituents across the state and that change maybe could be made. But at this time, we are dealing with all the information we have. I too have such pride in the Brandon Valley District for being number one, but I believe that we're number one because we set the pace. We don't follow. We set the pace by doing a lot of due diligence in every decision that we make. We know that this, this is real situation, that there is a district not far away that has had a student at home with two parents that's COVID. That student has been sent to school. That student is also someone that is on the starting roster for one of their athletic teams. Now think about how you feel having your child across the football line, across the volleyball net, competing against that child who has a very high likely possibility is an asymptomatic COVID case. That's something that we have to consider that we would add to that and community spread. Those are things that we have to consider. I'm not saying I'm for or against the change in policies like Harrisburg. I'm not saying I'm for or against the A D hybrid. I think there's a lot of other models we can survey as well. Right now, what I would say is we need some time. I support taking a bit of time. I know there's been changes. We've got some new memorandums. I would like to take some time and also use some time to see what goes on in Harrisburg and other districts that may have made the change. We can survey that and see if it applies to our district. We have been successful in not having a COVID problem. Again, we started with a good plan. Masks, I think, went down when we all said, realized, um, it doesn't matter. It's still gonna be quarantined, right? So if we could go back to wearing masks because masks and the protectors were because we were trying to prevent COVID, not quarantine. So if we could go back to that thinking, and again, if we could really get the Department of Health to recognize that, I think we'd be in a better situation. So we've been successful in meeting schools so far. My hope is that we can continue offering high level education, being number one in that, keeping kids in athletics safely and being number one in almost all of that. And then again, not having to close our doors. And again, we don't require, we gave them the option, but even doing so, we've been very successful.
I'll go next. Um, I'm not sure we, um, we have an issue with close contact in the sense that it depends on how you define issue. Um, on a typical day at the high school, not counting the first number of days of school and things are getting figured out in the Department of Health and all that stuff. Um, we have approximately 5% of our students out for close contact and 95% of our students are not close contact. So if I'm a teacher at the high school, my typical load is between 150 and 180 kids. That means somewhere between seven to nine kids are out of your total classes, your six classes that day. It's a small number of kids relatively speaking that are out. The issue is it is incredibly unfair to the kids that are, that do get quarantined, uh, for the close contact rules that a lot of us don't always even understand. And we get these delays and we have all of these kinds of issues. And it's hard to explain with you, how come? You know, I've already been here for five to 14 days. Why, this doesn't make any sense. And I don't, you know, and that's nothing on our administrators or our superintendent. You know, that's just the way it is. And, and so I totally get that. Um, the State Department of Health, CDC, Avera, Sanford, Mayo Clinic, all recommend masking. If you can't be six feet apart. And we knew when we put our kids into the classrooms that they would not be six feet apart. Uh, there are very few classrooms in this building with the numbers of kids that are gonna be in that room that you could separate by six feet. And Justin, thank you for sharing this. It never gone on me that a kid would, of course, come over and then stand. They'd, they'd be above you because they could, now you're fine. You got that. I know that. I didn't even think about that until you gave me that visual picture. So I really appreciate that. Uh, cause sometimes we can have a false sense of safety. We just assume that things make it, um, better. Um, so, uh, and there's so many unknowns. And I'll come back to what I said a month ago or more when we met, six weeks, whatever it was. Um, I just want to protect our kids. I want to protect our staff. And sometimes those two things strangely enough aren't always the same. You know, we have a responsibility to protect the people that work for us, like Justin, all the other staff. We have a responsibility to protect those people. Um, and if that begins at some point in time, we go to the plastic thing and ask if we need to get higher barriers, then that's something that we need to look at doing or whatever. But, um, so what I would say is if a time comes and the state gives us a different set of guidelines that would allow us not to necessarily have to send students home, or for that matter, to send them home because of close contact, um, that it would involve the plastic barriers and mandated masking. Uh, because those two things combined help. We've put our kids in a very difficult situation because we've got some students who really don't wanna, they got maybe some symptoms. They don't get tested because they don't want any of their friends or kids around them in class to have to stay home. And that's not what we want out here. And so we really put them in a, in a bad way. This is, as Dr. Harrison says, this is, you know, that's a bad decision. We'll, we can't, but, um, if we get different guidance, then I think that piece of mandatory, and again, when we say mandatory masking, there is going to be a small percentage of students who would be exempted from that because of a medical conditions, uh, you know, uh, you know, they're gonna have their, their permissions and so forth. And you would honor that. Um, you know, and again, we're not gonna go to a decision tonight, but those are things. I have one other issue that is not on the table relative to this, but it does concern me. You know, the, the possibility of, cause Dr. Harrison has been amazing. I gotta tell you this. I have peppered him with a gazillion emails and questions. And he has answered all of those questions, um, for me, uh, and explaining things like I'm sitting here saying, well, why don't we zoom? And he's like, uh, hello FERC. It's like, yeah, I should have known that, that, you know. And yeah, we have a master agreement that says that you can videotape teachers, teachers, you know. And it's like, yeah, I knew that too. And, you know, and you just, all of those kinds of things. So I really appreciate the promptness and the thoroughness, if that's the right word I wanted to use, of your responses. I appreciate that. One of the options, and some, so some people have asked, how come athletics, uh, activities can go on because they're within six feet and they're not wearing masks or whatever? And that's the glorious 15 minute rule. So one option that has been brought to my attention is, well, why don't we just rotate it in the classroom every 13 minutes so they can infect more people? Um, um, but it is, it is why we're able to allow activities to happen because that makes that work. So that leads me to this, that's a long way down this road. I'm very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable with Brandon Valley School activities, spectator situations. We allow kids to come to games. Not only do we not expect them to be six feet apart, excuse me, not only do we not require them to be six feet apart, we do not require that they wear masks. And we say, you know, that's their own choice. They can make their decision and all that, except they're gonna bring it back into school. And they're gonna be around each other for more than 15 minutes because unless you're rotating the crowd every 13 minutes, like, whatever. I'm very, very concerned about that. Um, to the point that future, you know, that's something we may have to look at mandating. These are very difficult decisions, um, but sometimes we have to help kids to make the right decision. And so to tell them one thing in the classroom and what the expectation is in the classroom, and then we let them go stand on the bleacher and do whatever they want, makes me very, very uncomfortable. And I think sends a, the wrong other message. But I would agree with Dr. Harrison. I think we should put this on pause. I think we should wait to see what shakes out with the Harrisburgs and Sioux Falls Christians and the other schools that have gone to this other and see if they have a spread. My understanding is, is that we have not had any significant spread. And I also think that we need to leave our administrations, administrations a leeway because an emergency can happen and they need to sometimes make a decision right now. And they can't wait to be super bored meeting. So, um, sorry it took so much time. Also, even only, you know, that I'm on the microphone too much anyway. But, um, those are just some things I want to get out there.
Um, I just, no, I know that you said that we don't have a COVID spread. So let's just say that again. We have not had a COVID spread, COVID issue. So what we have been doing has been working. Um, I understand why you're wearing a mandated mask. I understand when you're asking at the games, both, we'll cross those rules when we have to. Right now we're just talking, you know, the issue at hand. So we don't want us to create more issues out on the book face and whatever else people are coming out. Um, we just want to get, we all want kids in school. We all want them to receive education as safely as possible, but we also want to care for our staff at the same time in parallel. I think we go back to what we have been doing is working with the masks that have been worn. Those probably would go back up if they were regarded. And behind the partitions, I think we would maintain a very good status in the state of low to no spread in cases.
Yeah. I was just wondering, record that I would vote against it if it didn't involve mandatory masking. Just.
Anyone else?
Well, generally, I would just say thank you to our parents and guardians for the active participation in the children's education and completing the survey. Number of survey responses, when we think about the population of Brandon Valley High Schools, approximately 1,200 on the site, uh, getting 900 survey responses is absolutely incredible. The middle school, um, 710, and we got over 600 survey responses from all middle school, uh, parents. So I just really appreciate our parents and guardians and the active participation in the children's education and being responsive and receiving insight feedback. Uh, I think it's been important, um, it's an important part of the collaborative process. When we put it on deck, we didn't know if we'd have 80% of people saying we should go A D and we were making close contacts immediately. Uh, we didn't know what we would do. So I think it's important to engage our stakeholders whenever possible, um, become a proactive approach to the challenge. We were allowed to do so. Um, and I just really appreciate that proactive involvement and participation in the survey.
Mr. Harrison, I mean, I just thought of this with the staff surveys. The high school is 68 surveys, the middle school is 45. How many of those, how many are we missing? How many total surveys out of the staff should there have been? Likewise with the middle school. We obviously didn't get everybody's response.
That is a phenomenal question. And one of which I don't have exact answer to, I'm gonna say most of them. Approximately, I'd say around 90% if I have a guess.
If anybody could give me an answer, that might, uh, based on the old guide, years, um, the staff that getting the T-shirts, that is, uh, from the staff. The high school staff, which would include full-time and part-time. So we're talking kitchen, janitors, everyone marked probably 110, maybe. Ballpark, 110. But, but if you're talking teaching staff, um, probably closer to 65 or 60, something like that. But remember you have secretaries and janitors and EAs and all those other important people that make it happen. And Brad probably is, um, 55 or 60, maybe even 65 is what he'd be. So I would say a significant percentage of those people responded, responded. And I would guess that a very, very significant percentage of the teaching staff responded would be a yes.
Thank you.
I, I would just hold or assume that as important as this is, whether it's the community, whether it's the staff, I don't care if it's the janitor, I don't care if it's the lunch lady, I don't care if it's the principal. I guess I would, I would mandate that everybody votes, not just the ones that want to come and vote and voice their opinion. Just to get a better, well-rounded answer, whether it's a high school or a middle school, you know, is it, is it more of a high school problem or is it more of a middle school problem? You know, obviously we, we stepped at the middle school. We're not doing the intermediate and elementary for those reasons. What was the reason behind the high school and middle school? There's obviously reasons, you know. So, um, I appreciate the survey. I appreciate the inputs. Um, I just, we, we hear both sides of the story. Like you said, there's, there's never gonna be the right answer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Cause you're right, for this 15 minute thing, I can be a nonchalant listener. All right. With that, I hope that helped answer some of your questions for those of you who came tonight. I think our informal grease and all the time would be a good idea. Um, we kind of pride ourselves in this district about making sure
pride ourselves in this district about making sure that every stone is basically overturned and the manager looked at all the pieces, and with that great information that came in on Friday, I think it's only a property gift for Dr. Larson and his administrator to indicate their diligence and we can come up with an informed decision, so, thank you very much for coming and presenting, appreciate it. Number two, recommendations. Do you need a motion, Amy, then? No, no, no matter do anything, because if it was just a presentation, replace it on pause, nothing we need to do. Okay, thank you. Our number two recommendation, to approve the proposed coronavirus relief funds budget as presented.
I'm in the chair, areas of emphasis, including the coronavirus relief fund, staff support, curriculum, curriculum development, technology needs, HVAC, air exchange improvement, mobile 19, planning and preparation, support staff, and safety supplies. We know new laptops for all our elementary and intermediate school staff, increase our bandwidth connectivity needs because of the increased connectivity and bandwidth with the videos going out and in our, our infrastructure. HVAC improvements are substantial as well. Some planning pay on the distribution that all 10-month contracts are not required to work in their contracts, there are five additional days of pay if required in the port of work need to do that, they work four more than five extra days over the summer. Preschool, coded training and overtime associated with preparations. Healthcare enforcement staff, these dollars are a lot of inputs to the US Treasury guidelines that need receiving, can pay those specific line items out of this lot. All staff COVID stipend, every staff member will receive a COVID stipend associated with their PTE, additional command, additional cleaning supplies, all the things that they have taken on themselves to, to make the school area work. So, all certified staff, honestly letting in all certified staff are being given two days, that's for flexible curriculum development planning without acquiring them to work. We know the Mr. Duff and the high school science team are putting in lots of hours in the evenings preparing for distance learners that get kicked out for quarantine, et cetera. Just our way of giving them additional days of paying if we haven't acquired them to be on staff, certainly appreciate all that. In addition to that, all certified staff, so I would use my high school personnel example, he would have two additional days paid, that's something we kind of have twice during the afternoon. Anyway, all staff, all certified staff, we receive that curriculum for flexible two days, flexible education, that's the soft thing we're realizing for distance learning at middle school and high school level. A quarter of our distance learning teacher can be paid out of that fund. Our COVID EAs can be paid out of that fund, and then safety supplies, March through December also can be paid out of that fund, certainly on those. The coronavirus relief funds were provided to us by government home through the United States Treasury and a large bill that was passed out of Washington DC. We received those funds, or we received those, and we were wanting to receive those funds in the middle of September, and the Treasury guidance ultimately sets expanded by December 30th, which is why we have to expedite our process. So, certainly we recommend approval of the coronavirus relief funds as presented.
Any questions? I love seeing all the support for our staff, teachers, administrators. We hail and thank them all so much, and harsh for all that they did in the immediate season. That does not go unchanging, how much we thank them all for what they are doing during this very non-typical year. So, I fully support the proposed budget in full, as well as, in particular, what we're putting back into our teachers and staff as an investment, so I would move to motion.
I would second everything she said, including the motion.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That takes us to consent items three through six. I would entertain motion for those as presented, please.
Seven.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. First and all, there are, there was seven items there for us to approve, I would entertain motion for those as presented, please. So, there's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And information only, under communication, there is a thank you note there for your review. And with that, anyone have a formal board report they would like to give us tonight? Quiet. Hearing none, that takes us to the end of Barbara Virginia, I would entertain all some for her members.
Seven.
Second, there's been a first and a second, all those in favor? And then opposed? Those are passes, thank you.
Thank you.